Thank you, you may be seated. Could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Marshall is absent this evening. And also in attendance is Scott Campbell from BB&amp;K via Zoom.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements or written communications?
We have various written communications regarding the general business items six and seven. They've all been provided to the city council. We have one announcement, and this is regarding our Avalon Transit program. Avalon Transit will be holding a dialeride sign up Thursday, March 16th, and Thursday, March 25th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The signups will be held on Crescent Avenue, adjacent to the Avalon Transit booth, which is in front of the Blue Water. Dialeride is available to everyone 55 years and older. The dialeride program is also available on a temporary basis for residents under 55 years of age due to the COVID-19. If you are not signed up for dialeride program or have questions, please stop by the sign up event or inquire at the transit booth. Bilingual staff will be available for anyone who needs translation. This is a very great program that we have, and it ties into our public hearing that we have on the agenda.
Denise, can I get the dates again?
Thursday, March 16th and Thursday, March 25th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will post that on the city website as well as the city Facebook page.
Okay, we are going to take the agenda just slightly out of order for tonight. I, we do have a public hearing. Denise, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, we have two members of the Metropolitan Transit Authority on Zoom call. Right now, this is a required public hearing on the community's unmet public transit needs in accordance with Transportation Development Act Article 8. These funds are currently being used by the City of Avalon to fund Avalon's consolidated land transportation program, which is our dialeride and our fixed routes. We have Armina Saint on the screen there as well as Juan Miranda, and we welcome them both.
Thank you.
I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you. Good afternoon. On behalf of Valley Metro, I would like to thank the City of Avalon and the city council for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Juan Miranda, and I'm with the local programming department at Valley Metro. And with me is Armina Saint, who oversees the TDA 8 program at Metro. And we would like to open up with an opening statement, and then we'll open it up for any comments anybody from the public may have for us. So let me get those for you. Okay. So, good afternoon. The public portion of this meeting is held to hear testimony regarding the application of Transportation Development Act Article 8 funds, also known as TDA 8. The California Development Act enacted in 1972 under Senate Bill 325 provides a major source of state funds to support the public transit services. One quarter of a cent is collected as part of the statewide retail sales tax in this county and placed in a local transportation fund, TDA 3, 4, and 8, which is used to support the public transportation within the county. The TDA funds are divided as follows. TDA 4 recipients receive approximately 91%. TDA 3 is capped at 2%, and TDA Article 8 receives approximately a 6% share. By statute, most of the money, 90% share in Los Angeles County, goes to support the operation of our regional bus service, Metro, and the municipal operators such as Palm Beach Transit and Santa Monica. These services are funded in part by TDA Article 4. Additionally, some of the funds are used to support facilities for pedestrians and bicycles. This is known as TDA Article 3 for the 2% share. Article 8 of the TDA requires that proportional share based on population, approximately 6% share of the sales tax revenue be allowed to those areas in the county that do not have metro service because they are located outside metro service area. These are in the Santa Clarita Valley, the Antelope Valley, and Catalina Island. Transit needs can reasonably be met through an expansion of existing transportation systems, by establishing new systems, or by contracting for services. However, there are no unmet transit needs which can be reasonably met. With these funds, the funds can be used for local, public streets, and road purposes. While the purpose of these hearings is to determine how TDA Article 8 funds should be allocated, your testimony about transit needs may be used for local decision makers who are planning possible uses for Proposition A, Proposition C, and Measure R and Measure M funds. The Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, also known as Metro, holds a public hearing each year to determine what transit needs exist in your community before recommending how these funds should be allocated. Metro staff will compile your comments along with the comments made at all the hearings, including written comments received before the deadline. The Social Service Transportation Advisory Council, composed of local residents and social service providers, will consider your comments and make recommendations to the TDA 8 hearing board. The hearing board will make recommendations to the full Metro Board. The Metro Board will act in June or July to make the findings about the use of TDA Article 8 funds in your community. The Metro Board's recommendation will be forwarded to the state in Sacramento for review and approval. If you wish to submit written comments in addition to or instead of testifying verbally, the record for all hearings will be kept open for two weeks after the conclusion of the public hearings. Written comments must be received by March 30th, 2021, for all affected areas. Your written comments should be submitted to the following address. Armina Saint, TDA Article 8 hearing, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Mail Stop 99-4-3, One Gateway Plaza, Los Angeles, California 90012, or they can be emailed to sainta@metro.net. That's S-A-I-N-T-A@metro.net. The public testimony portion of the hearing will now begin. Please remember to state your name and any organization you represent. Thank you. If possible, I would also like to make a comment in Spanish. If there's anybody joining that may need translations, I'm available for that. Si alguna persona tiene un comentario en español, estoy disponible para asistirlas. Nomás háganme, nomás digan si quieren que la ayude, yo puedo ayudar, asistirlas. All right? Thank you.
Juan, does the city receive a copy of what you just presented to us to make available to the public?
Sure, we can send that over.
And if you have that translated into Spanish, that would be appreciated as well.
Sure, sounds good.
And with that, does council have any questions before I open the public hearing?
The only question I have is regarding both need and funding. If there are not needs discussed, or if there are needs that are already being met and the funding is available, is it possible to look at the use of funds for a transportation study sponsored by Metro?
Armina, do you want to take that?
Yes, I will. Would you please repeat that, what is the request?
Sure, so if there are needs met already, and the funds may be requested for a transportation study, is that something that Metro would be able to assess? A lot of the things coming up in several of the most recent meetings and several meetings in the future have to do with capacity versus need and the ability to provide personal transportation and/or public transportation.
The funds could be used to fund the transportation in your service area, or could be used to improve roads and services, depending on what are the needs in your area.
But they can't.
Those are the two ways that you could use the funds for.
Thank you.
No planning activities are allowed under TDA 8.
Thank you.
Michael or Yesenia, do you have any questions you'd like to ask before we open the public hearing?
I'm okay right now, thank you.
No, I'm good. I've been through this a lot, so.
Yeah, no worries.
And it's tedious.
Will open the public hearing?
I have no public comment at this time.
All right.
Just going to give about 15 seconds to make sure nothing pops up. Good? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Armina and Juan, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you again for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good one, thank you so much.
Please.
We will circle back to department head reports. And if I may, please call first for the Sheriff's Department. And specifically to share with members of our community that this will be Captain John Hawking's last meeting with us. And I can say that it has been an honor and a privilege to work with you the last few years, and appreciate all the service that you have given. And we wish you just all the best in your future endeavors. And I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you very much. There's a few people that I would really like to thank. And one is obviously the council. The council's been so supportive through good times, bad times, pandemic, all the things we've gone through over the four and a half years that I've been here. And I really appreciate the support. Denise, I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for me. Mike also, I know you've been here for a couple of years. And I really appreciate. When people called me up and said, hey, can my business be open? Do I need to wear a face mask? Do I need this? Do I need that? First person I called was Mike. Mike, how's it look? And then together we would go over it and decide because it was something that was new for all of us. It was new for the law enforcement, it was new for the public. And together, we made the best decisions we could. And a lot of it was giving warnings. I know that sometimes people got upset with that, why we gave so many warnings. But it was just new, and we wanted to make sure everybody was complying. I also have to thank the first responders here in Avalon. City Fire Department, County Fire Department, Harbor Patrol, the Rangers. They, all of us, working together. It's just something that you don't see on the mainland how you see here. Over town, you go to a call, and that's it. Here, they're your friends, and that's a big thing. The Catalina Island Company, Jeff Rusak and Gina Long, they helped me numerous times with things that would come up. And I really appreciate their help also. But probably most importantly is the Avalon residents. I really appreciate them allowing me to be their captain for the last four and a half years. And I can't thank everybody enough. So thank you very much. And I've made friends in this city that I will be friends with probably the rest of my life. And you don't see that a lot on the mainland when you work in an area. But Avalon is just different, and I really appreciate everybody's help over the years and their support, and I'm really going to miss everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joe Badali. And John, I want to thank you for the easy transition you've given me. And also on behalf of myself and the department, your 32 years of dedicated service is definitely noted and greatly appreciated for all that you've done for us. But locally, we were busy this past weekend with an increase in volume of calls for service. We had three arrests that took place, weren't significant. But we do see the uptick in calls for service and requests and activity. But we're going to do what we can to maintain safety and ensure everybody's well. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. I'd like to echo, John, thank you for your service to this community. It's been great. Got a few things to report out. Like, we're continuing several projects that we reported at last meeting. So the bauxite feed line near the Cartopia. Remember, the bauxite is what keeps the ores under control and keeps the grease down within the system. Approximately half the existing four-inch line that we're working on last week, we found it to be clogged, and so we'll have to replace that. So Public Works crews are currently excavating and replacing that line. It'll take approximately this week and a little bit of next to finish that work up. And then we'll get that bauxite system back in order. The concrete repair to the decks at the mole boarding area. Work continues on that, and we have about a few more weeks to complete that work. And it'll be ready for the spring break to come to the island, hopefully. And lights at the harbor near the mole, the testing is underway. John Gilbert's been spearheading that with the harbor maintenance. And new LED light bulbs will be installed very soon, so that project's almost over with too. Backup generator was reset in position at the Pelly Beach Road lift station. That underwent major maintenance. So that was done by the city staff and also Montrose Engineering. That was a good piece of work that'll make sure that we have backup power for our major lift station there when the power does go out. And then also, we had our centrifuge had major maintenance at the wastewater treatment plant that was sent off the island to the manufacturer of that piece of equipment, and it underwent major maintenance. So now it's back on island, in place, working. And what that does is reduce the solids within the sanitary sewer flow. And so that's what that piece of equipment does. And any questions?
I have two quick questions. The concrete repair to the docks at the mole, that was not part of Phase 1?
No, this is actually in that area of the Phase 2, and it's what we've been patching over the years. And since, even if we have, it's nine months or so before construction, it's in bad shape, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have some type of trip and fall out there. So just the patching was not working for us, so we went out there and actually removed a little bit of concrete and got, you know, a patch that's going to hold up through that until we get it totally redone.
And then the second question is, at the wastewater treatment plant, has the office installation that has all been finalized and is operational?
Finished, and it actually has staff in it.
Fantastic.
Council, any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council, city staff. I'll start with the time change over the weekend. That's a good reminder, time to change the batteries in your smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. I'd also like to thank Captain Hawking for his friendship and professionalism over the years, much appreciated. We have a date planned at some time in the future to watch a council meeting over margaritas. I'd also like to report that we were very pleased to get a letter of support for the Assistance to Firefighter grant, another letter from Senator Alex Padilla in support of that project. Next week is Tsunami Preparedness Week. And I'd just like to remind the residents of a couple of things. A lot of times, there's confusion about the Code Red 911 system, that if there's an earthquake, and will they get a tsunami warning? That you may, but in the event of an earthquake, the shaking is your tsunami warning. When the shaking stops, and it's safe to move from your home or business, wherever you're at, move to high ground. And then that's where wait for instructions, is there tsunami warning, or is there not? So don't wait for some notification. When the shaking stops, move to high ground. And we're also, on the 25th of this month, going to test the Code Red system. And it's also a great time to remind people, if you aren't signed up on the Code Red system, go to the city website, click on the Code Red icon, and you can sign up for free there. If there's any questions, feel free to call the fire station, and we'll walk you through that. It's a very simple process.
Could you repeat that date again that you're going to test?
The actual Code Red system. So we'll activate it, so you'll get, this is a test on your email, cell phone, TD, if you have a TD device, if you're hearing impaired.
Which date? Which date are you going to test?
Which states?
No, which date, what day?
The 25th.
The 25th, I'm sorry, that's what I was asking for, just so we're prepared.
Yep, I'm sorry, the 25th. And so we'll test.
You can prepare for it, but it's still going to.
It's still going to trigger, yeah.
And then lastly, it's my great pleasure to announce that Captain Allegria was selected to move into the fire chief's position in my departure. And that was a process that included applicants from the mainland. And we're very pleased that he has moved into that position, and he's going to assume all the duties and responsibilities of that here shortly. We've been working quite a bit on sharing the load right now and giving him the pass down and the passwords and all that good stuff. So it's my great pleasure to congratulate him into that position. And I'll let him take the podium if he'd like.
All right, something short and sweet, real quick. Mayor, council, city manager, assistant city manager. This is a special moment for me. I'm overwhelmed with gratitude to have been chosen as the next fire chief for the City of Avalon. Growing up here as a kid, you remember seeing the old chief driving around, racing around the cause, and just being in awe of watching him go. My career started as an explorer down at the old station with Piper Cameron, Adam Sanchez, Tammy Olson. We all used to ride along at the old station, it was a lot of fun. Soon as I graduated the fire academy, I came back, started my career at the old station, working alongside Terry Beatle, Bodie, Dave Davis, Richard, Chief Haves, Montague. I'm privileged, I love what I'm doing. I have loved what I'm doing the last 19 years. And I'm looking forward to a longer career. I'd like to thank my wife, kids, parents, coworkers for all their support. And the last person I'd like to thank is Chief Krug. I've worked with Chief Krug since the beginning of my career, and he's been a huge mentor for me. The department changed when he showed up and started working for the Avalon Fire Department. He has a work ethic like no other, and I have some big shoes to fill. Again, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Congratulations.
This is the part, Mike, where you ask if the council has any other questions. I'd be happy to answer them. With that, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Harbor.
Good evening, everyone. Orin Kostarfin, Avalon Harbor Master. Let's see, March, as you everybody knows, has been a wintry, gusty month. Much-needed showery conditions have interrupted our workflows at times. But much like last year in March, it's providing much-needed rain while summer fast approaches. Looking back at February, Harbor Patrol performed about nine enforcements to emergency assist, 28 public assist, as well as 148 security checks to the facilities around the harbor. Patrol increased, patrols checking restrooms and other areas known for vandalism, where there was an increase in graffiti and mischief going on. Generally after dark, if we see youth hanging out in a certain area, especially where damage is occurring, we'll just politely ask them to leave. Daylight Savings Weekend, we saw increased mooring traffic. Lot of visiting boaters despite the blustery conditions. By Friday, when I started this Friday evening, 4 o'clock, we had 43 vessels that had arrived, and approximately 17 of them were from the Shoreline Yacht Club alone. So March is starting off well. Pier, we have, on the east side of the pier, we had a fender pile that broke and caused the short-term loss of the float F. Patrol quickly mitigated the issue. We adjusted to a smaller city-owned float and reworked the lines and adjusted the counterweights to accept this float. And we think we're going to be able to use this float throughout the summer despite that loss of that piling. The piling's been removed from the harbor, and we have taken the remaining 26 feet of it up to the harbor warehouse. Last Thursday, I met up with the yard superintendent at Out Larson Boat Shop to discuss the repairs and maintenance of our city end float. The float has been hauled out at the San Pedro Yard for its annual repair. You might remember that we had a drum on that, there's four drums on that float, and one of the drums had been taking on water. We've replaced that drum, it was installed today. And we should have another week in the yard. And then we'll be out of that yard. And then when we bring that float back to the harbor in May, that will be our end float, and then we'll put Scott and the shoreboat and their float on the end of that. The Club Dinghy Dock Pier, if you've noticed it, is in the process of being rehabbed. The steel is being treated with a rust inhibitor, and a new plywood deck will be installed. The dock is an important access point for those using the public showers as well as provide much-needed dinghy dock space for both locals and visiting boaters. Our patrol boat 3 that sank last year, that happened actually during an officer's medical emergency. We capsized the boat, and the boat ended up on the mainland, and we've since repowered it. Marine Diesel Services in Costa Mesa has put a new outdrive and engine into the boat, and then transported it up to San Pedro, where we're going to do the remaining work, which is all the electrical and paint. So that's in the process. And that's all I have. I do want to say thank you to Captain Hawking for his service. It's been wonderful to have his support down there at the harbor. So I congratulate him, and also Mike Allegria, congratulations. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Orin. Oh, finance. Matt Baker.
Good evening, mayor, council. Quick finance update. The American Rescue Plan has passed since I think we met last. That 1.9 trillion stimulus that included funding for state and local government. Avalon's set to receive 692,000, split over two years. To put that number into context, our visitor-driven revenues are down 4.5 million since 30 December. So while the aid is definitely appreciated, it doesn't fundamentally change the challenges we're facing in our upcoming budget. But we are hopeful that the increased funding to also the state and local government, including the county, will provide additional funding opportunities in the future. And just as a reminder to council, at our next council meeting on April 6th, I will be providing a presentation as far as kind of the starting point for budget discussions. I won't be providing even a draft budget, but more of a starting point for those budget discussions. And so with that, if there are any questions for council?
Counsel?
Matt, the only question I was going to ask, and slightly off-topic of any of that, Measure A funds, have those all been allocated already?
So the Measure A funds, or Prop A.
Yes.
Prop A funds are what we primarily use to fund our local land transit system. So the Prop A funds are a portion of the 10% sales tax. A portion goes to the county, and then the county shares a portion with local transit operations. We use our Prop A funds to fund our land transit program, so that'd be the dialeride and also the fixed rate. It's also through Prop A funds that we get funding for the commuter subsidy program. And so the discounted commuter cards that residents are eligible to receive, we receive, I believe, currently 700,000 annually from Metro, from Prop A, from a discretionary Prop A pool. And we use that money. Prop A pool. And we use that money to provide that subsidy. So that is what it's currently used for.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, and the community at large. Five updates for you today. The first one, our community cleanup day was this past Saturday. We had 25 mighty volunteers. We filled the back of two pickups trucks full of trash, landscaping debris, trash throughout the community. We had a great turnout. We swept anywhere from Pebble Beach on up to Stagecoach Road and in between. Our next one is scheduled for April 24th. It'll be the fourth to Saturday of the month. Typically, we've been the second. We wanted to coincide with Earth Day, which is on the 22nd, so it'll be April 24th. Love to have the community come out, 9 to about 10:30, about an hour and a half of your time. Secondly, our kite day. We didn't have the blistering, blissfully winds that Orin was talking about on Sunday, so a lot of kids running and huffing and puffing to get their kites off the ground. We had two times go out with five to six families each. We had prizes. Lot of tired kids by the end of this, but a lot of fun, a lot of smiles on their face. And I think we might try and do something like they do, like some of the big surf events, like Hawaii surf events, where you've got to wait for the swell, and there's a period of time, and we might just call it on a day or two notice so we can guarantee some wind. We have one particular individual that's come up a couple times now, brings bigger kites, needs more wind, not getting them off the ground with some of the winds that we've seen the last couple of years. So something for us to consider for next year. Staff is working on the activity guide, the spring/summer activity guide. We're really encouraged about some of the things. I think we're going to start to come back this spring and summer. We're hopeful with some protocols and some of the regulations being lifted, and some of the protocols that we can place, put in place, that we'll start to see Beach Bingo maybe come back up with some distancing, our movie nights on the beach, our T-ball program, you know, summer T-ball program, some things like that. So April 1st, we should have that scheduled out. At our first meeting in April, staff will also be bringing back the discussion on activities, proposed activities for the 4th of July. So we'll have that discussion, and part of that being the fireworks show. And then lastly, earlier today, I sent out a memo regarding the dog park, the Staggered Dog Park, we're calling it, across the street. Just a couple things out of the memo, and then open it up for any questions. Mayor's been working on this for some time, for many years. In 2019, end of 2019, I literally got a list of 250 names and a petition, the people here in the community that wanted to see a dog park. So we kind of amped up the look, and where we could potentially put a park. We looked at various sites, most of them not owned by us, and just came to realize probably the best place to do it was on, literally in our own backyard at one of our parks, to see how that went. Some community meetings were held. This leadership group kind of went out to the different sites. We met at this particular site. So this site is the corner, right here, the Five Corners Parking Project. And as you see now, it's kind of taped up, and that's roughly the area that it would be. It's not, it's not the ideal site. We're hoping it's not the end-all site, but it's something that we can offer in terms of, you know, a gated community off-leads to the, to the community to start with. So it's approximately about 1,600 square feet. It would fit the same theme of the split-rail fence with some screening in there to keep the dogs in. Being a smaller park, we anticipate having a small pet, 25 pounds in, smaller at different times, and then larger at different times, and then a couple of days of the week where we'd have mixed times. So we're looking forward to it. We think there's really going to be a demand for it, and we're going to have to probably look longer term for a more permanent location. But we had the funding for it, we purchased the fencing for it, so we'd like to see this get in the ground sooner or later. We're hoping for a May 1 opening date. And with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Have you heard more from Los Angeles County lifeguards yet as to whether they're going to proceed forward with the junior lifeguard program?
Last I checked was a couple weeks ago, and we hadn't, they haven't heard the final answer. The, have you?
They just announced it today.
Okay.
On Janice Hahn's Facebook page, that they are going to proceed forward with it.
Oh, fantastic.
They were planning mid-month, so we were at mid-month, and that's great. Yeah. So that's a county, you know, county lifeguard, junior lifeguard program. They can call the county here directly for that, and we'll certainly help get that information out as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Dan?
Thank you.
Okay, City Manager report. I just want to remind the public about vehicle registration season, and this goes until April 1st. And vehicle hours are from 8 to 12.
And we just show up, right?
That is correct. You only need an appointment for your commuter subsidy card and a planning.
You show up, get in line.
Assistant City Manager report?
Yes, I have a presentation, just a very brief presentation. So while I, while Matt helps me load that up, I do want to take just a very brief moment and also thank Captain Hawking for all of the help and support that he has provided, me personally, in helping to navigate this pandemic. So I'm eternally grateful for your friendship, and I really appreciate everything that you've done for the community. So good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I wanted to give a very brief update on the status of COVID-19 pandemic and how it relates to both LA County as well as the community of Avalon. The last time we came and gave an update was actually way back on January 5th, and at that point, our numbers were pretty terrible. We were in the midst of a rather troublesome surge that was claiming a lot of lives and infecting unfortunately a lot of people. I left the number up in the bottom of this screen, just because I thought it tells a very stark point from where we were just two months ago and where we're at now today. So back on January 5th, our new cases were averaging, for the seven-day average, at about 108 cases per 100,000. We're now dropping all the way down to 4.1. That's as of today, as reported by the state of California. Our testing positivity then was almost 18%, and right now it's 2%. So what does this mean? It means effective as of Monday, we are now finally into a lower category in a four-tiered category system. So Los Angeles County is now in the substantial or red category. Our number is actually almost to the point where we qualify under the orange or the next restrictive tier. And if you look at our positivity rate at a 2.0, we're actually already in there for one of our two factors. The biggest change now is, now that people are starting to get vaccinated, what the state has done is said, look, if we hit two different goals, we're actually going to change the threshold for how counties can move forward and backward into these restriction, restrictive tiers. And so right now, we are in the little red category. Our case rate is almost on the very end of that at four. And right now, we've also, as a state, we've administered 2 million doses to 400-targeted priority zip code areas. If that increases to 4 million, if you look at the very bottom of that chart, you can see that the threshold actually changes. So prior to no vaccines being administered, in order to get out, you had to have a case rate that was equal to or below seven. And as more people get vaccinated, they've actually increased that threshold. So in order to change, then the threshold raises, and it makes it easier for us to move into different categories. So without any modifications right now with the additional vaccine, we would need a case rate of 3.9 or below for that cases per 100,000. If we have 4 million doses administered, that threshold increases to 5.9, which means that we would actually qualify right now with what our numbers are. So it's really good news. We're anticipating on these numbers continuing to drop. With that change in status, there's a number of restrictions that have been lifted or modified. And so I'm not going to go through the entire list of changes that have been, but I did want to highlight some for those in the community that might be the most interested in. Things like restaurants, where previously in the purple tier, only outdoor dining was allowed. Now in the red tier, with us moving in, indoor dining with modifications is now allowed. That's a max of 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is fewer. There still needs to be eight feet of distancing between the tables, and one household per table with limit of six people. However, outside, if you want to continue to dine outside, that threshold has now been upped so that you can have up to six people per table, or no more than three households per, per table. So that was previously not even an option under the purple tier. The other one that I wanted to highlight was museums, zoos, and aquariums. You know, we have a wonderful museum here. That is finally allowed to open up indoor at a capacity of 25%. And then there's some additional restrictions that are lifted. And so with that, that's all I really have, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Was there any anticipation with the kind of four-week outlook that everyone's been doing of if and when we might actually hit the 4 million and the orange tier?
And this is the last part, I'm sorry.
Oh, if and when we would hit the 4 million vaccines and the orange tier. Is there any...
I haven't heard any estimates. My guess would be within the next three to four weeks if we continue to up at the pace. The biggest limiting factor, and makes it harder to kind of provide an educated guess, is the availability of supplies. So we've seen a huge uptick in the number of people that are able to get vaccines, and I think across the board too. You're seeing a lot more categories open up so that more and more people are able to get vaccinated. So hopefully within the next three to four weeks.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, I just have a statement. I mean, this is all great positive news, but let's not forget, it's not over. So use caution, follow guidelines. Let's not go backwards, let's keep going forward.
Well stated. Okay, if no further questions, I'll move to City Attorney's report.
Yeah, just one. The state legislature is currently working on three different Brown Act changes, all as a result of COVID, which will make Zoom meetings or Microsoft Teams meetings permanent. There are a bunch of competing bills out there, so we're tracking all of them. But meetings conducted this way, with the ability of the public to watch on their computer, are going to be something that the state is going to basically mandate that cities do going forward. So again, those bills are, there's a bunch of bills. We believe one of them will eventually be passed, and we're monitoring that. And the league is also monitoring it and working with the state to make certain that whatever comes through is, is workable for cities.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I'll move to council member reports. Is there anybody who'd like to go first?
Just a handful of meetings this week that I attended, including the Avalon Beautiful Meeting last week, with the hope of getting that jump-started again, and hopefully pulling together members of the board and/or creating a new board, and really getting that going in conjunction with Catalina Cares through the chamber. Also attended the California Gateway, no, League of California Cities last week in the evening, and got to hear from the new California Secretary of State, which was really encouraging and informative to hear from. And then participated in the Rotary's cleanup this weekend, which was quite fun. And just a, you know, reminder, if you're hanging out at Pebble, or you see people hanging out at Pebble, please check the area around you when you go. It was better than I've seen it some days, and much worse than I've seen it most days. So any help that people can do, friendly reminders. I go for gills with people personally, so go for gills when you need to. Yeah, that would be great, and much appreciated. And then also tomorrow, we do have an Island Connectivity meeting with some updates and hopefully getting connected, both with State Senator Lena Gonzalez's office this week, and got connected with AT&amp;T as well this week. So hopefully some things moving forward. And then also some challenges with Verizon in terms of their design, that they had been working on some of their implementation throughout the island, that will cause some delays for some of their implementation, although I know, I believe, Hamilton Cove's, is, Hamilton Cove has already seen improvements based on the tower work that they've been doing out there. So encouraging stuff happening, and hopefully more to come. That's what I got.
Great, thank you.
I'll go next. Just an announcement that there is a community planting going on tomorrow, sponsored by the Avalon Rotary Club. There'll be two sessions. At 10 o'clock tomorrow morning at Sumner and Clarissa, they'll be planting flowers. And then at 3 o'clock at the VFW Park and Mole Area, I believe we have larger plants that we're going to be putting in. So you have two opportunities to join, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, and then tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock. I will be attending Contract Cities Meeting tomorrow, and earlier today, I attended a Cal Cities webcast on the American Recovery Act. It was interesting to watch where funds are going. In regards to broadband, that's one of the things they really want to use that money for on the infrastructure of broadband. So anything that you guys can do out of that, that'd be great. Yeah. And then I will also be attending Thursday, Cal Cities Legislative Update. And that's all I've got.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes. So far, I have attended two out of the four local advocacy sessions with California Contract Cities. We were able to meet with Sheriff Alex Villanueva, and also LA County DA George Gascon. And then I also will be attending their executive board meeting tomorrow. But I also just want to remind everyone about the Museums Virtual Program that is celebrating the women of Avalon, past and present. So that will be virtually on Zoom, March 20th at 11:00 a.m. And that's all for me.
Thank you very much. That was just one item off of my list. Fantastic. My personal report is attended monthly Gateway Cities COG meetings, Transportation and Board Meeting. And so I'm going to take this time to give an update to our community. Mayor Marshall and myself sit on a, what's sort of a water consortium here on the island, that was originally put together by members, stakeholders in the community, representatives of stakeholders in the community, and as well as all across the island, to discuss the general rate case that happened previously. That group has since come back together on a different kind of level, based on the general rate case that Edison has filed. Once again, Norris Bishden has been representing this group as sort of legal advisor. And so I would like to read the update. We are in the earliest stages of this general rate case. Two parties, T U R N, known as TURN, going forward, and Cal advocates purport to represent all ratepayers generally. They only represent the interests of Catalina ratepayers when they believe the interests of Catalina ratepayers line up with the interest of all ratepayers. At TURN's urging, we are currently dealing with one issue, the authority of the commission to pass some of its water costs to SCE electric ratepayers on the mainland, as was done in the last general rate case. There is a subsidiary issue. If costs cannot be passed to electric ratepayers on the mainland, what other sources, other than Catalina ratepayers, are available? All parties filed opening briefs on March 5, 2021. Reply briefs are due on March 19, 2021. The commission will decide the issues sometime in April 21. Here are the parties' positions. TURN's position: The commission has no authority to permit Southern California Edison to pass on any water... on any water cost to mainland electric ratepayers, period. SCE's testimony regarding other sources is inadequate. The general rate case should be phased to first determine what the reasonable costs of providing water before sources to pay those costs are determined. Cal advocates' position: The commission has broad authority, but SCE's testimony does not support any transfer of cost to mainland electric ratepayers. Since the mainland electric ratepayers did not cause the cost to occur, they cannot be required to pay any of the cost. SCE's testimony regarding other sources is inadequate. The Catalina party's position: As provided in the Public Utility Code, the commission has broad authority to approve any method of cost recovery that is just and reasonable, if supported by the facts and reasonable inferences drawn from the facts. The commission cannot decide what is just and reasonable in advance. SCE's water utility is a tiny part of its electric generating and distribution business. It should be treated as one business. By law, the commission is required to ensure adequate service at reasonable rates. As to other sources to pay the cost, a fee for visitors arriving by ferry is not feasible. Because SCE is an investor-owned utility, governmental entities cannot be a source to pay ongoing costs. SCE's position: The commission should allow some cost to be passed on to SCE's mainland electric ratepayers. The fee for visitors arriving by ferry is not feasible. There is no other feasible source. As expressed in supplemental testimony, if SCE cannot pass on some cost to mainland electric ratepayers, rates will increase by 600%. And this has been put together by Norris Bishden and has been distributed as well to the city. And that's all I have for an update. So I believe that we now have a presentation?
Yes, we certainly do. We have Sean Corn, he's an associate vice president with HDR Engineering, and he's been working closely with staff, particularly with Matt Baker, on a cost service study on our sewer, saltwater, and solid waste.
So I thought I would start by providing just a little bit of background for the public and council and then pass it along to Sean for the presentation. So this study was originally included as part of our fiscal year 20 budget, but was delayed last spring due to the timing of COVID. The factors that drove the need for this study were significant increases to utility costs and CIP costs in the sewer fund, as well as increased funding requirements for landfill closure costs based on the estimated remaining life of the landfill. In addition, since then, the state has adopted some new recycling requirements for organic materials, which if implemented is anticipated to increase our contracted collection costs by about $275,000 a year, which is about 13% of the solid waste fund's annual budget. And so with that, those were some of the factors that drove the need to look at our prior cost of service study. And the purpose of this presentation is really to provide background information to council and the public. We'll be coming back at the, I believe, the first meeting in April to hold a public hearing and to receive additional public input, but we wanted to provide counsel and the public with this presentation in preparation for that meeting, just so everyone has enough opportunity to review the rate information. And so with that, Sean with HDR Engineering is going to take over. Sean, are you there?
Thank you, Matt. Yes, good evening, Mayor Proton and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening. As Matt talked about, I'll be going over the draft results of the sewer, saltwater, and solid waste rate study. On the next slide, I have a quick overview of the presentation. And what we'll be focused on is just a quick summary of the purpose and approach to the study. We'll talk about the three key components of a rate study and the supplies to all three utilities, and then we'll get into next steps. So Slide 3 on the next slide talks about our overall purpose of the study. And really, our overall goal is to establish a set of proposed maximum rates that are sufficient to adequately fund the operating and capital needs of both, or sorry, of all three utilities, so the sewer, the saltwater, and solid waste, on a standalone basis, so we evaluate each of these utilities on their own. A key element of that study is really going through and developing those rates using a proportional and equitable methodology so that the rates are cost-based and meet the requirements and intent of Proposition 218. So as you think about Prop 218, a lot of folks think of it as an outreach public notification, send the customers' information, hold a public hearing, go through that protest proceeding, and if no majority protest, the council could adopt the rate. However, there's the substantive component of that where we develop the rates using generally accepted methodologies, but tailored to the city's unique customers and system characteristics and overall costs to provide those services, and then distribute them proportionally to each of the customer groups or the rate schedules that we have. So as we go through this process of establishing rates to meet the requirement of Prop 218, we also want to make sure that we consider other key financial planning criteria such as maintaining adequate funding for our annual O and M obligations, maintaining the system from an infrastructure or capital perspective, and meeting some of our financial planning criteria such as adequate cash reserves, so maintaining a minimum reserve level. The way we do this is on the next slide, and it's a three-step process, and it's a revenue requirement, cost of service, and rate design. That revenue requirement determines the overall revenue needs to meet the operating and capital needs of each utility on a standalone basis. And what this analysis provides us is an overall change in revenue that is needed to be collected through rates. Once we know that, then we can develop the cost of service and proportionally distribute those costs to each of the customer classes or rate schedules, how you charge your customers. And then ultimately, the third step, design those rates over this multi-year period to adequately fund each of the utilities. So I'll briefly walk us through each of these three components for each of the utilities. And I'll start with the revenue requirement. And on Slide 6, the next slide, we have a summary of what this does. And really, as I mentioned, it simply determines the overall level of revenue necessary to maintain each utility on a standalone basis. And we want to make sure we think about those key elements, adequately funding our renewal replacements or funding that infrastructure needs, and meeting some of our financial metrics such as target ending reserve balances. We do look out over a multi-year period. A general or typical rate study is usually a three- to 10-year period. Ultimately, we want to look out far enough so that we can see what's coming up on the horizon and establish rates at a level that will adequately support that. As I mentioned, each individual utility is analyzed on a standalone basis. And what that means as enterprise funds, each of these utilities' revenues should be sufficient to fund the operating and capital needs on an annual basis. So there's no transfers from any other funds of the city to support the overall operating and capital needs. We use what's known as the cash basis approach, and really, that's just a look on an annual basis, what are our operating needs, what are our capital needs, and what are the subsequent revenues necessary to support that. So getting into some of the key elements on this next slide is the overall review of the process. So we started with the fiscal year 2021 budget. We projected that out through fiscal year '25, '26, so a five-year period, projected period. And those projections were based on the historical inflationary increases that you've seen in each of these utilities for the different line items, so some of the different costs on the operating and maintenance side. Now, as Matt mentioned, we had a couple key elements changed on the solid waste side. We have the future closure costs, cost of unfunded mandates, and future landfill expansion costs that are in addition to those typical budgeted items for the solid waste utility. We also developed as part of the revenue requirement a capital funding analysis, and that takes a look at the annual capital needs and how we fund those capital needs in each year for each of the utilities. On the sewer side, we have a heightened level of infrastructure investment needed to maintain the infrastructure and facilities to continue to provide sewer services. And as we go through this process, we want to make sure we meet those targets from a prudent financial planning criteria that we talked about at the beginning. So I'll start off with the sewer utility. And what I'll do for each of these utilities is I'll walk through the capital plan, how we're funding it, the overall revenue requirements and subsequent rate adjustments, and then the ending reserve targets. And then I'll do that for sewer, solid waste, and saltwater. So the capital funding analysis for the sewer is based on the total needs in each year. So the bars or the total columns for each of those years we review represent the total capital needs. So you can see that runs in fiscal year '21, '22, the second column over, at about $500,000, and it goes above and below that. And that's what we see in a typical utility, is we have certain projects that cost more, then we have some lower costs and increase. The difference in the bars, the bottom being blue, that is annual rate-funded capital. So as a portion of your rates, we're funding a component of annual renew and replacements in the system. The red piece is the component that, in this case, is being funded by existing reserves as we go out through time, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more. In this case, there's no debt funding. We're not financing any of these improvements. They're being funded on an annual basis through any available existing reserves or cash on hand for the utility or annual rate levels. So that's a key element specifically for the sewer utility to fund the overall operating and capital needs. On the next slide, we take and compare all of the components of the revenue requirement. So that includes the annual operating and maintenance expense, any taxes and transfers, any existing or future debt, the rate-funded capital, and any transfer to reserves to fund future capital improvements. So the bottom part of these bars is your annual O and M, that's the dark blue or the black color. There's no taxes and transfers on the sewer utility. We have a little bit of existing debt on the books as we go out through time from prior debt funding. We have our rate-funded capital. The blue on this slide represents the blue on the prior slide, so that's our annual capital funding through rates. And the orange then represents our total reserve fund. So as we go over the years, you can see how that changes over time. The dashed black line represents the current revenue level. So you can see in 2021, we're meeting our overall operating and capital needs, but as we go out through the five-year period, current revenues are not sufficient to fund our total operating and capital needs. We basically cover operating, but as we get out through time, we don't cover the debt service and its final year payment or those future annual capital improvement needs. So to turn that dashed line to the top of those bars where that solid black line is, we would need annual revenue or rate adjustments, as you can see down below the chart, of nine and a half, nine and a half, seven and a half, three and three. And really, what's driving the sewer utility is the need to fund those annual sewer capital improvements. Once we get up to those levels, then we can flatten out over time, and we're actually able to put some money into reserves to fund capital projects, additional capital projects in those years that have been outlined, as well as put some money to reserves to meet our target levels. Speaking of reserves, on the next slide, we have a summary of the sewer utility reserves. The blue shaded portion is the current and projected ending reserve levels for each of the years. We started just above $200,000 in this first fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. That decreases as we use reserves to fund capital improvements. And then as we get our rates up to levels to fund our annual capital needs, we're able to put funds into reserve to meet our target ending balance of 90 days of O and M. That's our dashed line going across the middle of the slide. So as we get out into fiscal year '23, '24, our overall reserve levels meet our minimum target and go up above that slightly. Again, remember, these are the minimum amounts that we want to have in each of these reserve funds. And just as a side note, this is based on the overall projected revenue adjustments, the nine and a half, nine and a half, seven and a half that I spoke about on the prior So the next slide, that's the summary of the sewer. The next slide is our solid waste. Same setup, same approach. We have our annual O and M in the dark black component, the bottom of these charts. We have taxes and transfers in the green. That green bar is that closure costs that are planned in each of these years. It runs at about $250,000 a year out over this time period. We have no debt service, and we do have a little bit of reserve funding in those out here. So again, that current revenue line is the dashed line, and starting in 2021, you can see that we don't have revenue sufficient, we have revenue sufficient to fund our operating needs, but not those post-closure transfers. So essentially, we're going to be pulling money out of reserves to fund that transfer going out over the timeframe in order to meet the overall O and M expenses as well as those transfers for the closure component. We'd need to raise rates 19 and a half percent for two years in fiscal year '21, '22, and '22, '23, followed by nine and a half and then it levels out. And as part of that annual operating and maintenance expense, as Matt mentioned, we do have included in '21, '22, and '22, '23, the additional increase in costs from the contract for the unfunded mandates for the recycling component, as well as for fiscal year '21, '22, '22, '23, and '23, '24, some additional costs for the expansion of the landfill to evaluate and work through that process. So overall, solid waste as part of this update of the rates needs an increase to fund that, and part of that is driven by our overall reserve levels on the next slide. And what you can see here is we start at a level above our target, again, that dashed line, our minimum or floor component for our overall reserves of 90 days of O and M. We're burning reserves down over this next three-year period, and then they'll start to dip up as we get out into that time period, and revenues are sufficient to fund our operating and capital needs. The final utility is our saltwater utility. We do have some minor capital. You can see here, it runs from about $60,000 a year up to about $120,000 a year. That's all included in the rate-funded component. There's no reserves being used, and there is no annual debt issued to fund those capital improvement projects. So to summarize the revenue requirement, then this is again the same setup. For total O and M is the dark bar. There are no taxes or transfers, so no green component. There's a little bit of existing debt service. We have our rate-funded capital, that's the same blue bar from the prior slide, that's our annual capital funding component. And then we do have some reserve transfers. So in this case, current revenues are sufficient to meet our current overall costs. As we go out over time, we need to adjust rates essentially at inflationary levels, three to three and a half percent per year, to cover our overall saltwater utility costs. Based on those proposed adjustments, on the next slide, we have our summary of our reserve funds. You can see we're running just above our minimum target of 90 days, and basically in fiscal year '25, '26, we end right at that minimum target. So we kind of grow a little bit and then keep it flat as we go out over time and use a little touch of that in '24, '25. So in summary, for the revenue requirement, on the next slide, we have the overall percentage change to the each utility for the revenue needs, based on the development of the revenue requirement. So for sewer, this includes that capital funding component. For solid waste, it includes the unfunded mandate, it includes the overall costs associated with the closure costs, as well as the expansion of the landfill. And we calculated what that average monthly residential bill would be. So you can see, based on those So you can see, based on those percentages, what the increase in the monthly bill would be for customers. Again, later on, you'll see the annual bill as part of this process, but I tried to bring it back to monthly figures so folks could understand what that dollar change would So once we know the overall revenue requirement, we can go to the cost of service. And again, on the next slide, I talk about what a cost of service is. And really, the purpose of this cost of service analysis is to meet that proportionality requirement of Proposition 218, so that each customer class is paying their proportional share, and we're not subsidizing one customer for another customer. And the reason we do this is that no utility tracks cost by a specific customer. So on sewer, we're not just dealing with commercial sewer this week, and next week we'll deal with residential sewer. We have a combined system that provides service to all our customers. So a cost of service analysis is outlined in some of the manuals we have from the American Waterworks Association or the Water Environment Federation, outline those approaches that we can use to establish a cost of service analysis. And then we tailor that to your specific system and customer characteristics. Ultimately, these develop unit costs, which become the rates in year one. Now, as we go -- you're okay, Matt. That's perfect transition. As we go through this, what we did is we looked at the approach we used in the last rate study. We maintained that same approach and developed and updated the analysis to equitably and proportionally allocate costs. So when we think about it on the sewer side, it's on a per-equivalent unit basis. So we look back at what an assumed residential unit contributes on the wastewater volumes, compare that to industry standard flow factors or assumptions based on the different types of customers that you serve for sewer, and calculate what that average rate per-equivalent unit is. On solid waste, it essentially comes back to the estimated trash generation estimates by customer type. So different customers generate different types of trash, different amounts of trash that have been built into the cost of service analysis. And saltwater, it's based on the consumption equivalency. So similar to what the wastewater looks at, an equivalent unit basis, we have the same approach on the saltwater for the water consumption component. Overall, the cost of service provides us with that overall analysis to meet the intent requirements of Prop 218 that we can then bring into the rate design analysis. So on the next slide, we have our summary of our rate design analysis. We're not proposing any changes to how you charge your customers. We're only looking at the level of the rates being adjusted to meet the overall percentage adjustments that we talked about, the overall change in the revenue requirement, as well as any updates to the cost of service analysis based on the proportional allocation of costs. So as you remember, we have these rate transition plans for each of these utilities, and those were used to ultimately develop the proposed rates for each of the three utilities. So the next slide shows the sewer present and proposed annual sewer rates. So currently, right now, is the first column in numbers, fiscal year 2021. That current residential rate is $873. And then you can see, based on that revenue transition plan, what that overall sewer rate would be over the time period. As I talked about in the cost of service, we have different types of commercial customers, so public shower, hotel, laundry shops, offices, other combined shops, offices, restaurants, churches, bars and restaurants, less than or greater than 100 seats. Those are each, those rates for each are calculated based on the cost of service results on those flow estimates of the wastewater or sewer generation. That is then compared back to the residential unit and calculated what that per-equivalent is. So for each of the hotel, public showers, for each shower, it's $289.80, and so on for each of these components. On the next slide, I converted this to a monthly comparison for each of those components. So you can see overall, the rates have all increased by that overall percentage adjustment for sewer. And you can see for residential customer, that's $6.91 change per month for this first year of the adjustment. And then that varies based on the customer type. So a bar restaurant down on the bottom of the slide, less than 100 seats is 20, just over $20. For greater than 100 seats, it's just over a $30 change. But it's all proportional to the change of each customer class. The next slide provides our annual solid waste rates. Again, very similar, we come back to those estimated trash generation metrics to develop what that average is. Residential currently is $559.51, the top left number. And then based on the overall revenue needs, those increase over the next five years based on the need to meet the operating needs of the solid waste utility. Similarly to sewer, on solid waste, we have those different classes or rate schedules, and you can see how that rate changes based on the estimated trash generation for each of these customer classes. And on a monthly basis, same change. So for residential, your solid waste monthly bill impact would be $9.09 for that first year, based on the overall needs to fund the operating needs of the solid waste utility. Finally, on the solid, sorry, saltwater side, we have three classes of service, residential, commercial, and hotel. And that's based on those equivalencies. Again, you can see residential and commercial have the same rate. Hotel has a slightly different rate per unit. And then we've adjusted those based on the overall revenue needs, based on those assumptions of how each customer utilizes those saltwater services. So for saltwater, the monthly bill impact on the next slide is a change of 66 cents for that first year overall. So next steps, my final slide here, is take information and feedback from the council this evening, and provide any answers to any questions. We would then come back, work with staff to develop that final proposed rates for the next five-year period. And then we'd be back, as Matt mentioned, the plan is that first meeting in April, April 6th, present to the council the final proposed rate study. At that time, if the council chose, they would set that public hearing. We put that down here as June 1st, where then the council directs staff in April to move forward with the public notification through that Prop 218 customer notification and set that public hearing as part of that. And with that, I will turn it back over to staff or council for any questions or discussion.
Does anybody have any questions for Sean? Council, staff?
I want to just point out, when we have our public hearing in June, a mailer goes out to every property owner notifying them all of the changes that are being proposed. And they have an option to put in writing any displeasure that they have with it.
And I just want to let everyone know, we were having a small glitch with the Granicus system. I believe I got it fixed. However, anybody who's having trouble with the Granicus comment system, it should be back up and running. I just verified that. But you can also submit comments through ask, that's A-S-K at cityofavalon.com. Once again, that's A-S-K at cityofavalon.com, and we'll be able to enter in and read comments through either the Granicus platform or the email. So I do apologize for the technical issues, but it should be back up and running again.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I was just wondering, historically, is the 19.5% something we've seen before on any of the?
No, we have not.
Okay. Thank you.
It's going to be painful the first couple of years, but it is extremely necessary.
Right. Necessary and levels out at least after that with the cost of living. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Okay. Sean, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate your update. And I'm assuming with all of that to digest, I'm assuming we will be able to receive a copy of the presentation to look at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's move to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public, may address the city council at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit comments to two minutes each. Do we have any public oral communications out there?
I have two comments, but they're all on agenda items that have come through so far.
Okay, then we will move to consent calendar. City manager?
We have five items this evening on the consent calendar. The last one is the city council acting as the housing authority. The first one is minutes from the March 2nd, the regular city council meeting. Second is warrants for a total expenditure of $1,045,371.58. That is for the time period of February 22nd through March 5th, 2021. The third one is to adopt a resolution formally withdrawing the city of Avalon from the Los Angeles Gateway Integrated Regional Water Management Authority. We did enter into that agreement by resolution in June of 2015. The fourth one is just a receive and file the report on outdoor dining. And I just want to noted that we do have a toll of 11 restaurants and outdoor dining. That's just not on the beaches. That's on the public's right-of-way. The lobster trap has joined with that. That started on March 5th. That was on a trial basis for two weeks. It seemed like it was going very well. They are adhering to all their guidelines, and we're proposing that to go through May 18th. And as you know, as Michael reported, on Monday, March 15th, we did move to our next tier. So that does take us to the 25% that the restaurants are able to allow inside. So originally, in our staff report, is to start reducing 25% on the beaches, and that's just as we get into our busy season, hopefully. And the beaches are in greater demand, particularly for the daytime lunches and breakfasts. And we did send all this out to all the restaurants so they would be aware of what the staff report said. And I heard back from one who was not a beach restaurant person, but patio one. That's it? No, I'm sorry, number five. That's not it. My last one is number five, which is to receive and file the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2020, and direct staff to submit the Housing Element Progress Report to the HCD.
Counsel, would anybody like to pull any items?
Just a comment on three, if I could. Hoping that when budget and staff allows, that we reengage with that group on item three, the Los Angeles Gateway Integrated Regional Water Management Authority.
Okay. Thank you noted.
Okay. If, oh, please.
I have no questions, but on that note, I was going to make a motion.
Please.
Motion to approve items one, two, three, four, and five.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Bavel?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
And for the record, we have one absent. Mayor Marshall.
Okay, as we move to general business, we did receive, let's see, late this afternoon, a request to remove item seven from the agenda. The request is a postponement until we have a full council. Historically, we have not granted that type of request, but I would like to leave that up to the council's discretion to determine whether they want to hear the item and move forward, or if they would like to postpone it.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy, I just want to make one clarification. The way I interpreted Mr. De Albero's email that he was requesting that any item on the agenda that had to do with the transportation permit be postponed till we had a full council. So I took that as item six and seven. And of course, he could not request
Another item.
Another person, another applicant. So if he's requesting just his, that is up to the council, too.
Thank you for the clarification. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'd be okay with moving forward with item six and waiting for item seven for a full
Okay. I'm in favor of continuing with both items today. Typically, we don't pull one item to request a full council. So we've got a one and one there. Do you guys want to weigh in at all, or should we move forward?
We've had applicants ask for continuance until the next meeting previously. I think if either applicant is requesting that, I'm okay with agreeing to that, but it's at the discretion of the applicant for that choice.
I'm fine with what Yessenia suggested of doing six today and putting on seven.
Okay, so we will go ahead and officially postpone item seven. That frees members up to, if they didn't want to stay. And we'll move to item six, please.
Okay, item six is the transfer of a transportation permit that belonged to Tour Catalina, and it would be going to Island Bikes. You have received a number of written communications, particularly on it noted from Misa Bradley and, sorry, Dave Hubert, as well as you also had received some communication from the island company about the use on their property. So I think you had some questions, and the applicants are outside, if I can have them come in.
They're here.
Oh, yes, they're in now.
Just for the sake of conversation, I want to let the applicants know that we have some questions at the council first, so I'd like to keep the conversation at the council level first, and then we will invite you up to speak on your behalf. First question is for a question for the city, just more of a clarification, that the application to transfer the permits from Tour Catalina/Bike Catalina, that application actually came as a request from Mr. Affelder. Do we have something in writing that has, that Tour Catalina/Bike Catalina has agreed to transfer those transportation permits?
We have a number of email exchanges with Mr. Alexander requesting the transfer, and I took his emails as a transfer of his transportation permit for his electric bike business. Not just his business license, but the transportation part is which we hold.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that that was the understanding of the city was not just the business license, but also to transfer that. And so it is appropriate for the intendee of those permits to apply for that transfer versus the owner of those permits.
So when we're notified by the person that actually holds the transportation permit that they intend to sell their business and transfer to somebody else, which is what we had from Mr. Alexander in emails, and then the application for the transportation permit would be filed by the new person coming on for the business. And that's what took place.
Great. And then could the city also clarify the initial transfer of the permits from a prior owner, which was Catalina Tours, Mr. Doug Lord? There were initially 20 permits transferred, and then shortly thereafter, there were, or excuse me, a few years later, there were an additional 10 permits transferred?
Actually, in March 15th of 2011, Catalina Tours, which is Doug Lord, and he also had another DBA name, he was approved for 20 bikes for one year with an additional 10 bikes option.
Okay.
Then he amended his permit. Yeah, I gave you a whole timeline there, but he, Doug Lord had the 30, allowance for 30 bikes. One transportation permit that allowed for 30 bikes, up to 30 bikes.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications. Those were my two initial questions. I'll open it up for counsel, if you have any questions.
The only thing I wanted to clarify on the staff report, I believe the barge electric bike rentals is listed currently at 12 permitted, but that's actually 12 permitted plus eight for touring. And I don't know if there was a distinction ever made with regards to that. And I don't know if there was a distinction ever made with regards to that. But just wanted to address that, that there is, that actually is a total of 20 bikes at that location currently.
I don't believe he's ever done 20 bikes.
I don't think he's ever actually utilized them that way, but the permitting that he has currently allows him to do 12 bikes plus eight for touring.
Because that's when Doug Lord's bikes were permitted. That's what I thought that was. This was all when I was on the council at that time, but I couldn't be part of the discussion. I always assumed that he was allowed 20 bikes and then 10 bikes for touring, not that it was going to become part of the regular rental.
30 bikes pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's just part of the discussion to think of today as well as if those numbers, what that looks like with both of those considerations and having a guide with them or not. The number of bikes physically that they are able to utilize currently is 12 plus eight.
Okay. And that's for, that's for Mr. Hubert's operation?
Correct.
Okay. So we need, we'll ask for a clarification at some point from staff on that? Okay.
Because the actions I have from 2010, when Mr. Hubert came before the city council is a total of 12 bikes, period, 12 bikes. So I will have to verify, Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's what I always thought it was also.
Hey, any other questions from counsel? Councilmember De La Rosa, do you have anything you want to ask before we open it up?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure if they figured out where he was going to be storing his bikes.
So I think part of a bigger question that we'll ask as you guys come to join us, what your operating plan would be for this location. So if, no further questions from the counsel to begin, let's, we'll invite you guys up to the podium to address the counsel.
Hi, councilmembers, Pro Tour Mayor, city manager, and everyone else. Thanks for hearing this. We're seeking the transfer of the transportation permit, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the operation plan, what we want to do, how we want to do it. But before that, I'd just like to present that I've reached out to the other current e-bike operators, Dave Hubert and Misa, and we all seem to agree on three things. That we all support the passing of Agenda Item Number Six. We all oppose the passing of Agenda Item Number Seven. And we support the equalization of permits so that no one entity has more than any other. We're also very concerned about health and public safety. We think those are very, very real concerns. And Dave has promised to work with me to make those the forefront of our business when we do it, so that we can not only provide fun, entertaining activity, but do it in a safe and productive way for the city. We all get along this. So I would open up the, forward to any questions that you have or if you'd like to hear more about the business plan, I'd love to share.
Yes, please. Councilmember De La Rosa, did you have another? Well, your question specifically was, could you address where you plan to stage the bikes, how you plan to stage them, operate, train?
Absolutely. Those are all excellent questions. And what I would start off by saying is, everyone knows locations are the hardest part of doing business in town. This is, it's always an issue. And we do have permission from the landlord of the current area. The landlord of 228 has also reached out and said that if we can get access, she would be open to the idea of me renting that location again. The island company has expressed that they do not want anyone using the back parking lot for bikes. It's a liability issue. I had asked if there was options around that, increased liability, things like that. And they just said that at this time, they want to go a different direction. And so we would like to rent bikes from either the 220 or the 228 Metropole or another location. And there are other locations that I have looked at. And it seems like it's very hard to find a setback. And so what we would do is all of our orientation, all of our safety, all of our signing would all happen on private property. We would simply deliver the bikes on public property, on the street. And whether that's on the curb or on the sidewalk, we would be open to whatever the council would prefer that we do. I have a spot set aside in front of 220 Metropole. There is a small red zone there. I believe the red zone was originally left over from the, and I just believe this, I don't know if it's true, left over from the fire, when the fire truck had to come out. And that alleyway was an entry and exit. It is now entry only. And I don't know if that zone needs to be utilized in the same way it has before. I think that would make it excellent launching location. And so I wanted to ask Councilmember De La Rosa's question about storage of the bicycles. There could be storage of the bicycles in the building itself. I've also secured storage. The island company has offered me storage at Pebbley Beach. I can get storage at Moonstone. I can get additional storage for additional bikes. And I think those are all excellent questions. And if you want me to expand upon that, just please let me know.
Oh, I'm so sorry. A quick question. Could you, I'm asking this question because I have had several conversations. Specifically, this is really all I've worked on for the last 72 hours. So I've had quite a few conversations. You had indicated that the owner of the property at 228 Metropole, which is the prior landlord for the prior operation, has agreed to allow you to use that space?
She has said, if you can work out the access issue, I would be open to talking about renting it to you. I don't think of that as an agreement to rent, but that's how it was told to me, and so that's how I would express it to you.
Okay. Michael?
As having dealt with electric bikes for 10 years or with bikes for 10 years, working at Brown's Bikes, you need space to be able to do a lot of this. I just don't see how you can do it on a sidewalk or on the city street there. It has to be back. And at some point, you're going to have to show them how to use the bike, not just a movie or whatever. So you're going to have to have someplace to take that bike so they could do that.
Okay. I would like to follow a model, much like Mr. Hubert follows. I don't know if that's a possibility, but that was just my hope. And I completely understand your concern. And I think that that speaks to industry knowledge of, this is a safety concern. How do we overcome it? And I'm willing to do whatever we could possibly do.
Councilmember De La Rosa, do you have any other questions you would like to ask of the applicant?
I'm okay right now. Michael just asked what I needed, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any further questions?
Just one, and we've had, I've actually spoken to Matt with regards to this question as well, but I'm hoping to have him answer for the public. For the biggest concern that I can see currently is a safety concern with regards to the flow of traffic on Metropole. Not having stop signs nearby that would assist in mitigating people coming around the corner quickly and people on your bikes getting started right there. The possibility of, at first I was thinking, okay, maybe that spot can work with the red curb and looking at that, so I went out and looked at that both yesterday and today again. And the challenge of people turning in and when there's nobody parked in those couple of parking spaces next to that red curb, they cut in very quickly towards the curb. They almost want to get out of the flow of traffic like it's an extra turnoff lane. And I have a little bit of worry about that causing some safety issues for your guests that are out there staging bikes, may not be paying attention to the traffic, but paying attention to the guidance they're receiving, which is a good thing. The loss of the Parker Court, the dirt lot behind the building, was a really kind of a challenge that I don't know that there's been a solution to yet. Can you speak to what you would do if you were not able to have them start there? I don't know, you were talking about alternate locations, and some of those that have been thrown out have been the location on Catalina Avenue on the pedestrian right of way that's right near both an alleyway and delivery zones. And there was another one talked about on, somewhere near, again, the same kind of public right of way for another business, but an option of an idea there. There's, the plaza was discussed and it sounds like vetoed completely. That dirt lot was a no. I'm curious if there are areas that you think you may be able to operate from that would be safer than that area. I don't know that I, the challenge of knowing that there's the potential for a high level of risk on that street worries me.
And one of my concerns on the location there on Metropole is this. That concerns me. Because you have, just being at Brown's Bikes on Pebbley Beach on flat, and somebody shoots out when they start heading out.
I would respond that with the limited commercial locations that are available, we all know the challenges that businesses face. And I don't think that there's a single business that has a perfect example of how it's set, but that we work hard and we implement safety measures to make sure that those needs are met. And that if granted, I would work to implement those safety measures in the best way possible, working at the discretion of the council, and really making sure that we provide something that's not going to injure anybody because frankly, liability is the biggest problem with this company. And I think that it's a very fair decision to look at safety, public health and safety. I couldn't agree more. I have a little bit of a different opinion. I think that we could launch downhill and it would be safe. We could have a traffic person go out and stop traffic. We could look at how Misa and Hubert do it. I mean, Pebbley Beach Road is incredibly busy, and they've seemed to have worked out a good measure. Now Pebbley Beach Road is completely flat, and Metropole is steep. The place that we're at, I haven't gotten a measure grade, but it's not as steep at the top. I would gladly look for certain areas, and if the city had any help or suggestions, I would absolutely take them. And so I just want to say that I so understand your concerns because they're my concerns. Because in the end, it doesn't matter where people have a bad time. It doesn't matter where someone got injured. It reflects upon all of us. And I only want to do this if we can do it in the right way. And thank you, counsel. I know that it might have been a little bit of overtime, but I really just appreciate you guys digging into it and understanding it and just giving me the chance to say something.
Sure, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Back to safety. I, my big thing is that the safety rules are being followed. Big one is the helmets, that when you're on an electric bike, you wear the helmet.
I couldn't agree more, Michael.
It drives me crazy watching the kids in this town that have electric bikes and are not wearing the helmets, Joe. It's, you know, you go down, you're going to go down. And that's one of the big ones. You know, I spent 10 years yelling at people to put their helmets on just on a regular bike for the kids that were required to wear helmets. So that safety issue is really big for me.
I couldn't agree more, and the helmets specifically, because if, it doesn't matter what operator it is. If these people see someone without a helmet on a bike, they're going to say, oh, I can take off my helmet. And so we only want to rent to adults. We only want to rent during daylight hours. We only want to, you know, if we see someone without a helmet, if we see someone intoxicated that shows up, we don't want to rent to them. We only want to rent to people that are going to be responsible. And it's because for us, it's not worth the sale to open up that liability. And so I've talked to, go ahead.
And you just made a comment that I would like the public to realize is, you can get a DUI riding a bike, people. If you're drunk on a bike and not obeying the rules, you can get cited.
And that's such an excellent point. And I've spoken with Dave and Misa both, and they both said that they will work with me as much as they can to help educate me on how to keep everyone safe. And I will gladly, I feel honored that they would say, hey, we want to help you out how we can.
Just be aware, if somebody walks up with a Lou Al-Larry's hat, that was automatic. No discussion, we're not renting.
I'm sorry, these are all reserved. Thank you, Michael. Any other council members, any questions or comments?
I think we're good for a moment. Do we have any public comment?
I do have one comment. It comes from Joseph Del Baro. He writes, "We oppose Agenda Item Number Six for several reasons. One, the new owner states he wishes to continue under the same rules as the previous owner, including the business address, and list the address at 220 Number Two, Metropole Avenue, when the previous address was actually 228 Metropole, which is not available. Tour Catalina was legally evicted from the original location at 228 for non-payment of rent. The landlord there has procured a judgment against Tour Catalina and all its assets, which would include the transportation permits. Tour Catalina cannot transfer or sell, give, that which does not own or control. Two, Tour Catalina has issued a cease and desist order through SCICO through its landlord to stop all activity on SCICO property, including staging and/or rentals. The new owner applicant has been notified by this, of this, by SCICO. Number three, the proposed address of 220 Number Two, Metropole Avenue is presently occupied by Catalina Escape Room. Where will the bikes be staged? Will sidewalk space be allocated? Where is the storage for the bikes? We are told by city staff that storage facilities for inventory was critical to the issuance of transportation permits. Four, SCICO permissions to use their roads are non-transferable but renewable at their discretion. Do they have these presently? Five, we are told by the mayor, Tour Catalina, transportation permits were revoked and placed in abeyance for failure to pay admissions taxes, for lack of liability insurance naming the City of Avalon as co-insured, and for the lack of any liability insurance whatsoever. They were operating with no insurance at all. How is that not a violation of city code and safety requirements and should have been pointed out in the staff report?"
Am I able to respond? Oh, go ahead.
I think, well, let's let the city manager.
Mr. De Albaro, this afternoon at 3:02, when he requested that these items be removed from, or postponed from the agenda, he did state that the transportation permits of Tour Catalina were subject to a judgment from their ex-landlord. It has come to our attention that this is incorrect and the information we had received was false. Sorry for any inconvenience caused from this, Martine and Joe. So I just want to reflect that they did correct that as far as that we, I forget, what did he say, Michael? That we took away his permits? Or took away his transportation permit? We did not put anything on hold or anything. We had been in communication with Mr. Alexander on new insurance requirements. And one of my last letters to him was that we would be taking this to the city council if we did not get the proper insurance. We had a lot of communication going back and forth between Mr. Alexander and the city. So I don't know where that information came from, but it is not correct.
And in all fairness, I would like to add to that, and as a matter of transparency, I received a phone call from both of the prior landlord's attorneys today. And there is no such judgment. There is no such letter that you would find in the court system. Their concern is, is that the prior tenant abandoned the premises, has abandoned the belongings. They read the letter to me, the last letter that was sent to the owners of the, or excuse me, the business, where they are trying to work very closely with them to get the property back to him. So there is nothing that is in a legal state that would prevent the transfer of the permits.
Just the transfer of his transportation permit.
I'm, excuse me, of his transportation permit.
We have nothing to do with the number of bikes, sir.
Based on, yes, based on the allegation in the public comment. Based on, yes, based on the allegation in the public comment, and that was written either yesterday or today, sometime earlier to where it was already a public comment that was read.
Yeah, that public comment was submitted last night at 7:26.
Thank you.
And I have a question for the applicant, is, when you talked about equal permits between the three entities, are you talking 20 permits then, so there would be a total of 60 on the road, or are you talking each one would be given 30 permits, which would be a total of 90, and that would be 28 additional ones, and that's still questioning if the barge electric bikes has 12 or 20?
That's an excellent question. If I could address the public comment first, would that be acceptable? Or would you like me to address?
Doesn't matter, Matt.
Okay. I just wanted to say that on the public comment, I don't agree, I'd like to make it known that the person that made that comment is also the person that has submitted the item number seven, and I feel like my reputation has been kind of hurt by it, I have never had any ill will against either one of these people, and I think that it's very damaging to the entire process to make unfounded allegations, and I just want to say that that speaks to the integrity, and everything that I've come up and told you today, I have 100% been absolutely honest with, and I would expect the same thing from any applicant. For the question of a fair number of permits, that's an excellent question, what I do know is me and Dave, Misa, and I have all agreed that a set number of permits for each company is an excellent way to kind of make it fair. I don't necessarily want any of my potential property taken away, but at the same time, I want to do what's best for the city, and I want to do what's best for the transportation, and what I would say is that I would leave that to the council to talk about, what is a good number? Is it 20? Is it 30? Is it 25? Is it 22? I'm not 100% sure. I've talked to Dave and Misa, they're both very happy with their number of permits, and I just, what I'd really like to do is just make everyone happy, and everyone gets the same number, and that if we then need more, we can approach the council as an industry and say, hey, we each need another one, we each need another two, and what those specific numbers are, I don't think I'd, I don't think I could give a good answer on quite yet, but I would be open to any number that the city and the other operators agree with, because I want to work in unison.
Matt, when you're buying the business, are you purchase, is there 20 bikes with the business, is there 25, or is there 30? Does he have a total of 30 bikes that you're purchasing?
I am not purchasing any physical assets, other than the transfer of the permit. I am only purchasing the transfer of the permit, and so I believe what I am purchasing is the 30 vehicle permits, or the 30 bike permits.
Scott Campbell, I have a question for you, we've never put a value on our transportation permit, if he's not purchasing the business that has the assets, I, I've never heard us put a value on a transportation permit.
We're not putting value, we're asking is, has he met the conditions in the municipal code to allow the transfer to a core, which are the six points, five points listed? If so, then the city can allow that, the permit to transfer, you don't need to place a value on it, and you can also change the terms of the permit from what they are right now to meet the specific conditions that exist today.
So it sounds like Mr. Alholder is purchasing a transportation permit with a set amount of money, but no assets to it, I don't understand.
So there are no bikes right now?
From what I understand, the bikes are still at the previous location, and they're still property of the previous company, although that could be incorrect, I am not an attorney and I don't know. What I do know is that I am, I'm open to whatever we can do, now if I have to purchase the assets, we could figure that out, I think it's a little difficult with the incorporation, and that there might be a few challenges, but if that's what we have to do, then I have no problem doing that.
Mr. Campbell, should the applicant just come back as a new transportation permit before the city council, and not a transfer of the permit for assets?
Well, he could do that, that's one option, or he can, the council can take the existing permit and transfer it to him, thereby not increasing the number of bikes, bike permits out there, or, this is an entitlement, so the entitlement portion is all that the council has the ability to deal with, it's the entitlement of the amount of permits up to, if it has 30 right now, it's up to 30, the council can determine for just this entitlement, the permit itself, whether to reduce that, keep it the same. All that's being transferred is the permit, and the value of the permit is a matter between the prior owner and the purchaser of that.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and allow Mr. Alexander to have a few moments at the podium.
Thank you, council, thank you so much.
I just wanted to go ahead and add real quick, that when I, my brother and I did this, we did not receive any physical assets either.
Nothing for Mr. Lord?
Nothing for Mr. Lord as a physical asset, no, just wanted to clarify that, so when we did purchase it, yeah, we didn't do it either.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further comment from the public before I bring it back to the dais?
I have no additional comments at this time.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have additional comments? I have some if there's no further discussion. Given the vast number of conversations I have had over the last couple days, I received several communications from members of the public who are very concerned about the logistics and the management of this transfer. I am absolutely in favor of the Alexanders having the ability to transfer their business to a new owner, that is something that every business owner goes into business knowing that they hopefully will build something that they can pass along, so I am in favor of a transfer, however, I believe that we have some more questions to answer. Some of the information given in application comments are varied based on communications that I've had, and in order to make sure that the city dots all i's and crosses t's, my recommendation would be to hold this item over and allow Mr. Alholder to present a business plan on how the, you intend to operate, where the bikes will be stored, where you're intending to do your transition with the guest, where you're intending to work on the bikes, the flow of traffic, and to also seek the approvals, the first approval being from the current landlord, and again, just so that we have everything in order, I would like to see some sort of documentation from Mr. Rains, as the owner of the facility, that approves of the specific business plan that you have, and allows for this particular commerce to take place on his property. I know that in general, we would make a condition of approval to allow for the Island Company to, you would, you would have to get a letter from the Island Company before, so I would like to maybe ask that that happen while you're gathering all your data, let's just do that simultaneously and have that. An additional concern that I would ask my fellow councilmembers to weigh in on is, the request of the applicant was to rent from the age of 16 and above, and personally, I feel it would be appropriate to allow for the same as the others, which is either 18 or 21 years old. So if you're amenable to 18, I'd like to see that reflected in the staff report when you come back to the council, and so my proposal would be to hold this item over and allow the applicant to address the concerns mentioned and provide additional information.
I can work with that.
Agreed, yeah.
I agree as well.
Could I get a motion to hold this item over?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to hold it over.
Second.
You'll second.
Okay, city manager, please call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Four i's and one absent.
Okay, do we have any other comments from?
At this time, I have not received any additional comments.
Okay, at this time, we'll say goodnight, Tony, and thank you, everybody, and meeting adjourned.
Thank you.